The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening and welcome to the April 29th, 2025 meeting of the Marion County School Board. It is now called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now read the commitment statement. "We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success." For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operations of the Marion County School System or the school board. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received to the board clerk no later than 5:40. These procedures are applicable for each or on a separate sheet of paper. Good evening, Ms. Martinez. Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Ms. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Ms. Mary Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
If you'll please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Martinez, would you please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting?
The notice for the April 29th, 2025 school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on April 18th, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under Proof of Publication.
Thank you. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the board this evening.
Good evening and thank you. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following a conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school board. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 10 speakers.
Okay, we have 10 speakers. So I'd like to move the timer to three minutes each, please.
I... Are they... They're all on the same public, yes. I'm okay with five minutes if you guys are.
I'm okay with five minutes, too. I don't think we've limited it before.
Rest of the board, I... We just stated in our statement that if it was more than five speakers, so that's why I said we'd go to three minutes. I guess I'll take input from the rest of the board.
You have 10 people?
50 minutes.
50 minutes.
That's fine.
Okay.
We have limited them before.
We have.
We have done limited before.
We have, okay.
Not recently.
All right, Attorney Powers.
The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to 30 minutes unless extended by a vote of the board, except that all speakers who signed up to speak and who were outside the 30-minute time limit may address the board at the end of the meeting. So if the board wishes to extend it, the board must vote to do so.
I make a motion that we extend and keep it at five minutes per speaker. So if that extends to 50 minutes, so be it, and I make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. Okay, Ms. Martinez, would you call our first speaker, please?
Mr. Ben Whitehouse.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Ben Whitehouse, that's W-H-I-T-E-H-O-U-S-E, all one word. Good evening, Board. I was disappointed at the last board meeting to hear a member of our community attacking the character of our interim superintendent. I worked closely with Dr. Brewer at two different high schools in this district, starting in 2010, which means I've known her longer than just about anyone still working in this district. I can honestly say without hesitation that working with her at both schools made me a better leader. Her genuine love and concern for both the students and staff we supported was something to admire. She maintained a clear focus on helping our students succeed while also holding them to high expectations. She built relationships with all staff and took time to listen and support them while also pushing them to grow as educators. In each case, not only did she help improve the school climate, but both schools improved their school grade as well. I support Dr. Brewer wholeheartedly as an educator, a leader, a champion for our students, and as our interim superintendent. The opportunity to address the school board during a meeting is a great responsibility of the citizens of this community. There are many challenges that we face as an institution in public education, and the feedback from parents and the community is an important one that helps us meet the challenges head-on. However, my hope is that as a community, we stay focused on those challenges and on helping every student find success and not stoop to the level of attacking the character of the hard-working employees of this school district. They all deserve better. Our mission is greater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse.
Glenn Fiorello.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Fiorello, F-I-O-R-E-L-L-O. Of course, I'm here to discuss the superintendent's position. I asked for a copy of the job description for the school board members. I was never ever to track one down, but I did get one on a superintendent, and this is... It's an embarrassment what's written in here. This was approved in 2019. I don't know how many of you were on board in 2019, but this is when it was adopted. And I'm just going to read what it says. "The superintendent of schools should work with the school board to create a vision for the future and then work to communicate it effectively internally and externally and focus on its implementation." To me, that's no kind of a description. That's just me personally. And that could be what gets us in trouble each time with our superintendents. We need to have it spelled out in black and white what your responsibility is and what the superintendent's responsibility is so we can all work together in harmony and accomplish some tasks. Now, let's say for argument's sake, the rest of this follows in that same direction, and it does. I would say this is a brain, not a brawn, position. Think about that for a minute. A superintendent, just like yours. We've got more conversation in this document here regarding physical activities. Now, I'm going to read two of them to you. There's 15 of them on here that don't even apply to a superintendent. And I'm embarrassed to read them, but this is what the document says. Sitting, resting with the body supported by the buttocks or thighs. Then standing, assuming an upright position on the feet particularly for sustained periods of time. That's number two. Number three is the same as number one, and number four is the same as number two. This is garbage. I'm embarrassed. I really am to say these words in the public record. This needs to be clarified first before we go too much further with this. You need to know what the job descriptions really are and what is expected of these individuals. And the rest is just as bad, okay? And I'm embarrassed to even say this up here. There's been a culture for quite some time that got us in this mess that we're in all the time with the school systems, not only this one here but all over. And I'm going to cite a couple examples. There was a school board member, you all might remember, maybe 20 years ago, that never would attend the meetings. And it was a lady, and she said, "I don't attend them because there's not always something on the agenda that I care to hear about." I won't say the lady's name, but there was a lady who... That was an article. You can go look it up. Maybe 20 years ago. This culture's been going on for a long time. It just didn't start. Do you remember Evergreen School? We have a problem sometimes, and government in general. I remember one time they had to coerce a school board member or someone just to attend a meeting pertaining to that Evergreen. And that went on and on and on. Then we went on to something else. I don't know if we ever corrected the problem we had at Evergreen, and that's part of our government situation problem. We never really finish to get a problem to its rectified. We move on to another one, and hopefully we forget about it. Then there was a fellow by the name of Don Browning. He was an appointee, if I'm not mistaken, from the governor on the school board. I was in a meeting with a fellow, and he said how much he disliked him because on the consent agenda, he would hold the meetings up by going one-on-one what was in that consent agenda. And I said, "That's what I want out of my school board. I want them to question things. Don't just rubber-stamp everything." And all this is leading up to the mess that we're in now with the school board superintendent. Yeah, he questioned things, and I don't see enough of that. I just see more or less approval. So keep that in mind, because when you drop the job descriptions, the problem was, we need to make sure that you all are going to work in harmony with the superintendent, and each one of you knows what your limitations are. If the best you have, that is this lady in question, the person in question, then move with it. But if you know it's really not what is proper, then you're going to need to do a search. You've got no option. That's in your... That ball's in your court, not mine. You have to make that decision yourselves. I wish, though, that you would stop offering all these benefit packages for someone in administration. The amount of salary that we pay an administrator is probably more than you ever thought they'd make working in the school system. I think that should be sufficient, because entry-level jobs don't get a real benefit package. They don't get a car. They don't get all these other things. Just keep that in mind if you don't mind. This vote here, I believe, there's five of you up there, I believe this will be your legacy, which way you go with this. I really do. It's very important it's done properly, and I ask that you take your time. If the lady, the gentleman, whoever you have is a proper fit and you feel comfortable with them, move forward with it. If you don't, then you need to advertise. But it's a shame that we can't pick from our own right here. That's a black mark on the school board as far as I'm concerned. We should have more people that are qualified for this position than ever. And we need to make sure that the people we have, next time, yes, they're ready to go. They're qualified. Pardon, sir?
Your time is expired.
Thank you, and if you don't mind, Laura, I'm going to give you a holler. If you give me a call in a couple days, there's something I want to discuss with you that also pertains to this.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello.
Deborah Daniels.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Deborah Daniels, D-A-N-I-E-L-S. I'm a retired Florida teacher. I'm a grandmother of two wonderful granddaughters in your Marion County Public School System, and I'm on the SAC Committee and the MAC Committee at Dunellin High School. I want to thank the superintendent for all her work that she has done for Marion County Schools, teachers, staff, and our students. And I want to welcome our new interim superintendent, Dr. Brewer. But I'm here tonight to ask that the board not take any shortcuts, but follow the usual procedures and protocol for the selection of our permanent superintendent. The board needs to widely advertise to create a pool of the most highly qualified candidates, and then interview and eventually negotiate the contract for that permanent position. There's no need to rush the process. The superintendent will be responsible for leading our district and achieving all our goals. So it's crucial that the candidate fits with the district's mission, vision, and strategic priorities. This is an awesome responsibility for the board to find the right leader. Please do not ignore the usual search protocol. Do not take shortcuts or rush to select our next permanent school superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
Keith Cunningham.
Good evening. My name's Keith Cunningham, C-U-N-N-I-G-H-A-M. I am a retired Air Force Colonel and currently serve as a junior ROTC instructor at North Marion High School. I fully support Dr. Brewer as our interim superintendent. Her leadership is exactly what we need at this time. Throughout my 27-year military career, I've had the privilege of working for and being mentored by exceptional military leaders. I've completed hundreds of hours of leadership training, including two master's equivalent programs. I have held key leadership roles in an organization with tens of thousands of personnel and led both operational units and headquarters staff teams. My experience includes working directly for the Secretary of the Air Force at the Pentagon, where I observed leadership at the highest levels of government. Over the past 12 years as a junior ROTC instructor, I have served in three different school districts around the country and worked for six different principals. I share this background, not to speak of myself, but to lend weight to what I'm about to say. Very simply, Dr. Danielle Brewer is the most effective leader I have encountered in education. Her direct, decisive approach, her willingness to hold people accountable, and her unwavering integrity set her apart. Her unique combination of experience, character, and leadership ability is a rare asset that should not go underutilized. I strongly encourage you to leverage Dr. Brewer's powerful leadership immediately as our interim superintendent. Our students and our district would benefit immensely from her leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Victoria Barkley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Victoria Barkley, B-A-R-K-L-E-Y, and I would like to second everything Mr. Cunningham just said. I first met Dr. Brewer when she became APC at Fort King Middle back in around 2016. At that time, I was teaching sixth and eighth grade ELA. I had only been teaching for a year when she came to the fort, but I had been in the system previously as a para. Dr. Brewer was the first female administrator that I worked for that didn't make me feel inferior as a teacher or as a para. As a new teacher, I needed more support than most. Dr. Brewer had an open-door policy, and I felt comfortable going to her anytime I had a question or just needed support with a particular strategy, student, or class. I liked that she was present. You would always see her out and about on campus. She hardly ever missed a day of work and was always one of the first on campus and last to leave. If there was a game or a dance, she was there. Oftentimes, I would look up while teaching, and she would be in the back of the room just watching and always asking if I needed anything from her. One of the things that impressed me the most about her, besides the fact that she is always dressed immaculately, is how well she knew her students and staff. Students loved to greet her and high-five her as they arrived on campus every day, and she knew each one of them by name. It was the same with the rest of the staff. Many times, there would be a line outside her office of people waiting to go in to talk to her because she actually listened and made you feel heard, which is refreshing and unfortunately not that common with most administrators. Anytime I had a question, Dr. Brewer had an answer, and if she didn't have an answer, she would make sure to find one and get back with you sooner rather than later. Dr. Brewer cares about the students, teachers, support staff, administrators, and all school board employees in Marion County. She has been working in the district at multiple schools in multiple capacities, starting as a teacher for a very long time. She is committed to us and the community as a whole and wants our district to be the best it can be, but that isn't something that she can... she or anyone can achieve alone. It takes the help of the parents, teachers, students, administrators, school board, and all of the community stakeholders to make a difference. Like they say, it takes a village. We need a leader, but we do need a leader, and I can't think of a better one than Dr. Danielle Brewer. We need a leader who knows the ins and outs of our county schools and their staff, someone who has worked at each level and can relate to all employees, someone who knows the entire curriculum inside and out, someone who is from here, whose own children graduated from Marion County Public Schools, who knows and cares about the people she represents, someone who is invested in our community and will work tirelessly to ensure that our district reaches its full potential, because she isn't someone who fails, and I know she would never fail us. Thank you.
Kirsten Angel.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Angel. My last name is spelled A-N-G-E-L. I live at 2055 Southeast 50th Terrace, Ocala, Florida, 34480. First of all, I want to thank all of you. I know you've already spent an inordinate amount of time on this, and I know you will continue to do that, and I know it is not an easy task. However, unfortunately, as we all know, our school system is not doing very well right now. As a matter of fact, someone has recently stated that we were in an abysmal record. I hesitate to have to say this, but the interim superintendent, she started as a teacher, and she worked her way up through the school system. She is now currently a member of the executive leadership, where she is involved in helping to establish the curriculum. You know, I want us to consider whether we definitely want her to be our school, our interim school superintendent, let alone the permanent school superintendent. You know, I ask you, is that someone that we definitely want planning the future of our schools? We, as the citizens, will be paying her a lot of money, and it's a lot of money that, you know, one needs to think about, you know, a lot of money running one of the largest school systems in this area. Just like running a business, we need and want someone who would be, you know, subject to a national search. We need and want a job description. We need and want a timeline from you all that says what we're going to be doing in hiring this person. You know, I ask you, when we're looking at someone who's going to be running our school system, is this somebody that we definitely want to be running our school system? I think we need this done as soon as we can possibly get it done, because it is important. It is important not only to our kids, but to our teachers and to the employees. One thing that I would ask that you do, especially in conducting this national search, is ask the teachers, ask the teachers, the employees, the people that you all help represent, ask them what they want in a school superintendent. Ask them what they expect in a school superintendent. I think that's also very important, and I think if there are concerns about that, you don't have to put their name on it. It could be done at their school, and they could do it anonymously, and that way you all would know what they are looking for. I think that is also very important for us to consider. You know, our schools just can't wait any longer for us to keep searching and searching and searching for the interim superintendent. We need leadership. We need direction, and I think it's very important that we get this in our school superintendent. I ask that you all work on this at every work session and every school board meeting, because it is very important, and I think it is something that deserves our highest priority so that we can make a good search for our school superintendent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Angel.
Patricia Schaefer.
Good evening. My name's Patricia Schaefer, known by most of you as PG, AKA. Spelling of my last name is S-C-H-A-F-E-R, and I reside at 2015 Southwest 43rd Place, Ocala, 34471. Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, board members, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Thank you for all that you do for our county and our children and our parents and for all the hard work you've done on the topic that I'm going to speak on, that we've already heard a lot of already, the superintendent search. As I stated, my name is PG Schaefer, and I am the Marion County Republican State Committee Woman, and I am here on my own behalf, as well as the behalf of the Marion County Republican Executive Committee Chairwoman, Bridget Smith, who is unable to be here tonight, as she intended, thanks to a sick horse at home. So she asked me to make sure that her statement was read into the record, which I intend to do. Essentially, I'm here to say what we all know. We have a major mess on our hands with our school district that is multifactorial. The most precious and important stakeholder here are the children. They deserve the very best, and with all the questions that have swirled around this body for a multitude of reasons, not limited to the item on the agenda tonight, the installing of the interim superintendent, I am here to express that on behalf of the Marion County Republican Executive Committee and the nearly 140,000 registered Republicans that we represent, our absolute unequivocal expectation is a national search for the permanent superintendent. That is actually the benefit of an appointed superintendent, a very large pool from which to search. We must select the very best and brightest. We must select the very best and brightest that we can bring to serve the children and the parents of this county. And with that, I'm going to read Bridget's statement, which was her quote in the Ocala Gazette, and I quote, "We believe the students of Marion County Public Schools deserve the best opportunities to reach success. Our current ranking compared to the other 66 counties is abysmal. I think every parent would agree that Marion County Public Schools should conduct a nationwide search for our next superintendent, not sure that hiring from within a failing school district is our best option." Thank you.
Thank you, PG.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I'm Mary Ann Lambert, L-A-M-B-E-R-T, and I would like to support the remarks of Mr. Daniel, Ms. Angel, and the Republican Executive Committee in emphasizing the need to continue with your normal protocol, to do a search, to do interviews. I have no, I don't know anything about Dr. Brewer, and that's irrelevant to me because in a national search or a bigger search, if she is the most qualified person for this job, she will get it. I have been on the Board of Trustees of universities, of not-for-profit organizations. I have run a major division of a bank in New York City, and I find it concerning for the school board's reputation and your image if you would override the current protocol right now and go ahead, as some of you seem to think you should do. Please consider that. I would love to hear actually what the rationale is for moving ahead at this point and permanently appointing the interim superintendent. Maybe you could explain that a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert.
Erica De La Cruz?
Hi, good evening. My name's Erica De La Cruz, last name D-E-L-A-C-R-U-Z. I always seem to be off-topic every time I speak, so I'm actually going to be addressing. I was here, I was present for the March 25th meeting, and I asked what your plans were after the dissolution of the Department of Education to support students with special needs like those on an IEP. The answer that was given by Dr. James was underwhelming at best. The tablecloths on this board's table got more attention and vigor than the question about what has been an integral part of public education since 1979. While I appreciate that Dr. James has a positive outlook on the outcome of the DOE being dissolved, her confident is not a contingency plan anymore than, you know, just thoughts and prayers. So my call to action to this board is that we commit to the continued protection of our children and that we come up with a plan of what it would look like if we stop receiving funding, since the cuts in funding will largely affect rural areas, which we are. So, yeah, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Smallridge, S-M-A-L-L-R-I-D-G-E. I'm here tonight to support Dr. Brewer, and I also want to talk about the topic of the national search that everybody's talking about. But first, I want to tell you a little bit about me. I've been in this district for 29 years as an educator, 20 years as a principal, 10 years as an elementary principal, seven years at Fort King Middle, and three years at Marion Technical College. And my path crossed with Dr. Brewer at Fort King Middle, and with being a principal for 20 years, I've had a lot of assistant principals, a lot of them, and I counted it up the other day. I have eight former assistant principals that made it to principalships, and two made it to the district level. And I don't necessarily consider that a promotion above being a principal, and I don't mean that offensively because being a principal is not an easy job at all. But my path crossed with Dr. Brewer at Fort King for a reason. Superintendent Tomlin knew that we were doing good things at Fort King. Fort King was in trouble. We were not doing well academically. I left a school, Marion Oaks Elementary, after moving it up from a D school to a C school for the first time and then maintaining that C, and then Mr. Tomlin knew that I wanted to be a middle school principal, so he came, visited, and said, "I need you to go to Fort King. We need to bring the grade up. We've got to get it up because we're going to be in trouble." And he knew we just did it at Marion Oaks Elementary, that I had a good team there. I got to Fort King, started the work, had a good staff, started putting everything together. I'm really good at math, and you guys that know me, I'm not so good at reading and writing as much. I mean, I can do it, I'm adequate, but I'm not strong in that area. We were making huge gains at Fort King in the math area. We were doing acceleration. I needed help with the English side of the house. Mr. Tomlin sent Dr. Brewer to me, and she is extremely strong where I am weak, and so the team was perfect. And we moved that school, Dr. Brewer, our team, our leadership team, and the teachers at Fort King, to a B, and we maintained that B the following year. So when I heard somebody come up here and publicly speak and say that Dr. Brewer hasn't done anything to move this district, you know, she was wrong. She has moved this district. You heard Mr. Whitehouse come up here and say that, you know, she helped him move schools. She helped me move Fort King, and you guys know how difficult Fort King was and is and can be. That school was humming, and it was a B school, and then COVID hit, and yes, we all took some steps back, but it didn't fall past a C when a lot of schools fell back in a couple grade levels. So everything that Ms. Barkley said as an English teacher and a reading teacher at that school, I can't say enough about what she does and her educational skills that she has. She is the right choice, guys. You did your, I wasn't thrilled with how you guys chose the salary and your package and everything you did for interim superintendent. I think you'd had a longer list if you'd have gone a little higher, maybe like superintendent pay, but you cast that net, you had the group that you had to interview. You guys did your due diligence. You interviewed them. You chose the same top three I would have had. You had a good choice. Dr. Brewer is the right choice as your interim superintendent. I cannot support her any more than what's already been said. The national search, people were talking like we've done this a million times. You only did one. We did one national search in this county. We used to vote for our superintendent. You guys did that. A couple of you, I think, were on the board when that happened, and the national search brought in a big superintendent that had big county, big district experience. I think she came from Orlando area, Nevada. She was a deputy superintendent. She had a lot of experience. Well, guess what? She came into our district, and she did the job for five years. Who did she work? She was a good leader. Who did she work with? The cabinet that she chose. She saw a talent in Dr. Brewer. She hired Dr. Brewer for the cabinet. She put her in place, and she came from a national search. She brought all those skills that the national search is supposed to bring to our local district, and who did she train? Her cabinet. Was Dr. Brewer there, listening and learning? Yes, she was there, listening and learning. So if the national search brought in great things to our small district that some people think we're not talented enough to run our own school district, well, we are. Dr. Brewer bettered herself, worked her way up, got to be a principal. She worked on her doctorate degree while she was at Fort King, worked her tail off, and she proved to a national search superintendent that she was worthy to be on this cabinet. And so I don't know why people are saying she's not ready or she shouldn't be considered for the, if you guys do the national search...
You have one minute remaining.
Go ahead. I mean, if the county and our citizens want, you need to listen to them. They voted you in. Do the national search. But what I want to kind of caution you on is do not eliminate Dr. Brewer from being considered for the national search because you spent $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 conducting a national search. She is a very good candidate. You made a great decision for her interim. If you do the national search, just be careful not to take her off that list of consideration because you spent $40,000, $50,000, or $60,000. She might be the perfect person, and I think she'll outdo anybody that's on that national search. So I'm here to support her. I wanted to caution you on that because a lot of people are pushing as if she can't be the one that's chosen for the national search. If she wins out, she wins out. If she doesn't, then we'll have a superintendent that we find from a national search. So I can't support her anymore. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Smallridge.
No more speakers.
Okay, that's our final speaker. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the appointment of interim superintendent?
Good move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. And with that, Board, I'll open it up for discussion. Board Member Thrower?
Thank you, and I'm sure, you know, each of us will have more than one opportunity to speak as we discuss. I wanted to open by saying that, thinking back, I can think of one time where we had a lot of speakers, where we did limit it to three minutes, but when you have 10 speakers and everybody's taking their time to show up tonight and weigh in, and the difference to me between 30 minutes and 50 minutes isn't even worth talking about. So that's why I wanted everyone to have the opportunity to sign up, to be able to speak. That being said, I was not a fan of the appointed superintendent. We always elected a superintendent here. I take my right to vote very seriously, but I also understand that there are implications to both decisions. When you have an elected superintendent, your pool is obviously a lot smaller to draw from, but hopefully your pool is someone that is well-known, well-respected in the community, someone that, you know, a lot of us already know and feel comfortable with. So there's advantages to that. There's also advantages to nationwide search, especially these days. There's just more mobility in society, and if people are not going to be able to vote, we should at least give the courtesy of casting a wider net, I think. In my opinion, I would not discount any interim superintendent from throwing their head in the ring to be considered to be our permanent superintendent. I love competition, and I say let the best man or woman win. So those are my thoughts on those particular items. I'll also say, as a longtime community member, that there are wounds in this community that need to heal, and one of the major ones, from my observation, is, and you're never going to get rid of this completely, nor should you, but when someone is given the opportunity to literally hold the lives of children in their hands, as a superintendent and as board members, we're always on edge, waiting, hopefully to never receive that call of any tragedy, let alone a huge tragedy. So for the money that we spend on superintendents and for what superintendents are being asked to do, the great superintendents, I don't know that you could pay them enough for the responsibility that they carry and the weight that they have on their shoulders. And I'm grateful to Dr. Gullett for the five years that she has led this district in very trying times, coming off of a very controversial superintendent, coming into COVID, all of those things that those of us who've lived here for any amount of time know and understand. I think that she has handled the job with dignity and with true professionalism, and that is evidenced by the caliber of interim superintendent local within our school system, professionals that applied for the job. I feel like our just previous speaker made a very good point that coming from outside and still thinking that two candidates on her executive cabinet were worthy of being brought up and nurtured and being a part of the most highest-level leadership speaks volumes, and the other side of that to me is that when you bring in someone from the outside, they automatically have to start playing catch-up. They have to try to prove themselves to this community, which has been very insular and still is in so many ways. So I guess I want to give a little, you know, foreshadowing to everyone that regardless of what we decide to do, if the interim superintendent rises to the top and is very clear that this is the direction we should go, that's one decision. If we decide to do a full search and we find a new person from outside, that's the other decision. But it would just be wonderful, while continuing to acknowledge all of our challenges, that we get as many sane adults to get behind us and push and spend time with kids, help kids, volunteer, anything you can do. These are our public schools, and there's not a lot of other options, and there'll always be a place, in my mind, for public education. And the best schools, far and away, have the greatest amount and depth and breadth of positive community involvement. So those are my openers.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Campbell, did you have a comment?
Sure. So I appreciate the folks that have come this evening and shared your thoughts. I echo the sentiment for a national search. I intend to speak to that in my board comments this evening, but for now, we're voting on our interim superintendent candidate. Spent a couple hours with her the day after this decision was made, and I'm grateful for the time that we spent talking through why I believe a national search is important because I think it's important for your future leader to understand what your thought processes are, and I appreciate Mr. Fiorello coming and speaking about the job description. I do think there's some tweaks we can make to the job description now that we've actually had an appointed superintendent for five years. When you have to think of the original board that created a job description, they didn't know what they didn't know, and now we know, so let's do better because we know more. So I completely agree with many of the sentiments that were shared this evening, and I certainly will be voting in favor of Dr. Brewer being our interim superintendent, additionally having conversation about the national search and when that timeline will occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. James?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm grateful that our community came out tonight. I see so many familiar faces, many of which, you know, chose to sit quietly and observe but are showing and understanding their presence here has value, whether it is in support of this decision for the board or maybe in disalignment with the board's decision. But I appreciate the presence tonight. I think it's important to note that tonight we're making a decision about an interim superintendent, and we're voting on an interim superintendent contract, and that contract terms out on April 29th, 2026. So this board has not had any further discussion about what we do next. What we knew was we needed to do something right now, and what I know is since the board made a decision about 10 days ago that this was the direction we were going to go with Dr. Brewer, she spent every day tirelessly working with Dr. Gullett hand-in-hand to solve the imminent obstacles this district is facing. Every single year at this time, we have discussions about staffing plans at the district level, and we talk about budget, and this year, more than ever, budget is a pretty hot-ticket item that needs to be addressed. And ahead of any paycheck change, ahead of any formal title, Dr. Brewer immediately began to work with Dr. Gullett, and a huge thanks and acknowledgement goes out to Dr. Gullett for her willingness to work side-by-side with whoever interim we chose to move this district forward and stay focused on our shared vision. So this is not a permanent position. What the board is voting on is a one-year contract, and in the coming months, the board is going to have to decide what we do next, and whether that is a national search or we say things are going well and we're going to stick this out because we don't want to spend the money right now. That will be a discussion that this board has to have. I don't think that discussion has to happen today. I think we need to vote today on an interim superintendent contract that is for one year, and then in the coming months, we will have future discussion about what we do next. What I know is the city... what we do next. What I know is the city of Ocala, whose budget is almost exactly the same as ours, it's over the $1 billion mark. When they terminated their city manager, they appointed an interim. He had a long interim contract, and they chose not to do a national search, but continue to use him. And it has worked out pretty well for the city. And so I want to ensure that we are doing the best possible job to be good stewards of the money. I think I have really maintained that across all different platforms throughout this district. And let's see how it goes. And in a couple months, we'll have a discussion about what we do next. But what I know is I'm ready for Dr. Brewer to continue to get to work with Dr. Gullett and to proceed forward, make some difficult decisions in the next coming months, and let's start the school year and figure out what we do next.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Madam Chair, thank you. To our community, thank you all tonight for coming out to express your concerns regarding the interim superintendent. I, we heard some, some very passionate comments for the process. As our, my other board members have stated, this tonight is not to determine the process of how we get a permanent superintendent. This tonight is about the interim superintendent. I did hear something about job descriptions, about the job description for the superintendent, but there in that job description, there are some statutory requirements that are in the job description that points out duties and responsibilities for a superintendent, that's whether in Marion County or any other county in the state of Florida. So we went through the interim process of trying to get those people that were interested in the interim position. We came out with a top three, and out of that top three, we came out with the one that the board had consensus on, that, that was Dr. Brewer. Personally, I've worked with Dr. Brewer since I've been on this board, prior to her coming to the district office. And she has did a tremendous job, and she's always been one that's been upfront and transparent in how to do the work. And one thing I did, did find out about her very early, in when she was in North Marion, that she's concerned about doing the right thing for the students. Not about what, what, what some of the adults may want, it's about what's good for the student, even if that means having hard conversations with the parents, having hard conversations with staff. So tonight, I think we need to move forward with our interim conversation. At some point, we will have a conversation about a national search. I think from the very beginning, I, I kind of expressed my, my intent about us having a national search, because I was part of the process. We had, we moved from an appointed, from our elected superintendent to an appointed superintendent. So there is a process, but tonight wasn't the night for that. And so I'm sure we will have conversation about that. I'm sure, I've heard other board members say they're going to talk about it in their board comments. But right now, we need something that's going to help move us forward. And there has, there doesn't need to be a big gap in moving forward. It appears that the transition period to move forward with Dr. Gullett and to Dr. Brewer is already starting, or has started. And that's what we need to do to make sure we have a continuation of services for all of our students in Marion County. So tonight, I will be voting for Dr. Brewer to be our interim superintendent.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. No, Board comments?
All right.
Very good. Thank you, Board. Your comments, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. I am very grateful for the community for showing up this evening and taking time to share your concerns and your experiences with the board. That's very important. I appreciate it greatly. I also want to express gratitude to Dr. Gullett. She's been very generous in this process with mentoring and taking time with Dr. Brewer to walk through these very difficult conversations that are coming forward. You know, I don't, I don't envy Dr. Brewer at this time. I, I said to her shortly after she was announced as our top candidate for interim superintendent, this is a challenging time. Even to put your name in the hat to be an interim superintendent, you, she should be commended, because it's a difficult time, it's a difficult job. And so thank you again to Dr. Gullett for generously taking time to include Dr. Brewer in these conversations coming forward. And with that, Board, I'm ready to call the vote, if everybody else is ready. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the interim superintendent employment agreement? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Board, I open it up for conversation and discussion.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
After reviewing the, the, the contract, I did just want to highlight that, that this contract does not prevent Dr. Brewer from applying or entering a national search if there is, if there is a search. So I did want the public to know that she will still have every opportunity to be considered. So she would not be kicked out of the process because she is the interim. In some cases, some companies do that type of thing, but that's not the case in this contract.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Yes, Board Member Thrower.
Thank you, and, and thank you for saying that, Board Member Cummings, because it was really important to me in my interviews, that whoever we selected for interim superintendent was at least willing to entertain becoming our permanent superintendent, because talk about on-the-job training, and if they do well, I just didn't want to see that candidate go to waste, so to speak. So thank you for, for reiterating that. And again, you know, we're here, when I opened this up, when it was first published, I thought, that's probably the shortest agenda for a school board I've ever seen, because we literally really are here, and this is the only thing we really can vote on and talk about tonight that has been properly noticed, is to approve and appoint Dr. Daniel Brewer as the interim superintendent, and then approve her contract. We've already approved her to be our superintendent, so I'll be voting yes on her contract for one year.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Okay. With that, Board, I will call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. At this time, I will go around asking for a board comment. Ms. Martinez?
No, nothing, thank you.
Attorney Powers?
I just did want to address one thing that was, did not quite fall under the contract, and that was that Ms. Morant had contacted me and the board chair both to indicate that there was a question as to the advanced degree stipend. It's something that we offer for all employees who have an advanced degree that is above and beyond the requirements of their, of their contract. So in this case, a doctoral degree is not a requirement, but it is something that would be above and beyond that requirement. And so that was not something that I put within the, within the contract, because the board had not previously approved it as part of the job compensation package. However, with consensus of the board, Ms. Morant, having no objection, would ask for permission to treat that as per usual district standards, which would be that the degree stipend be added to the salary. And if not, then the board needs to discuss in order to, to give some consensus of what they want at a future session.
Okay, Board Member Thrower.
Just for a public understanding, would you please share who Ms. Morant is and her permanent role and responsibility?
Yes. She is, I always get this wrong, executive director of, of Human Resources. So, and she is, she works with our personnel and, and ensures that when it comes to salary ranges, job descriptions, all those things, that those are, you know, equitably enforced across the district. So in this case, I was approached just to, to ask, is that something that we could write into the contract? And given that the board had not specifically given me leave to do so, I did not specifically write it into the contract, nor do I believe it's written into most contracts. It's simply something that the district offers, and that would, I mean, it would assume be left up to the Human Resources Department to distribute as they, as they would with any other employee.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Dr. James?
No, I was motioning that Dr. Campbell had her hand up. I didn't want you to miss it.
Dr. Campbell?
For the public also, if, if I'm not mistaken, the stipend for a doctorate degree is 7,500?
I think it's 6,000, but I don't, I don't know that, and I could not, I could not.
And that, that would be something before making a decision, I think it would be helpful for us to know the actual dollar amount. I, I thought it was seventy, maybe it is 6,000. I, I know it's graduated, certainly. So it's master's degree at a certain level, certificate at another, and then doctorate at the highest level. But before making a decision, I would like to know that amount.
All right. I'll, I'll have, I'll look into that and have that brought back to you.
Okay, thank you. Reverend Cummings?
Madam Chair, my question, concern that is, is that something that she's already receiving? If, and because if she's already receiving, I can't see why you would penalize her on that.
Right. She, she's receiving it as to her current job, her current position, yes. Now, this position, there is a pay increase, the, but the pay increase would be reduced by the amount of the stipend if she didn't have it. So it's, if, as of right now, the contract only speaks to the actual, the actual salary, right? Doesn't speak to the degree enhancement.
And the reason I ask that, you don't lose benefits because you get promoted. You don't lose benefits because you go up. You, if you already have it, I, I can't see why we would penalize her on that. And it's not such an arbitrary, it's not such an astronomical amount of risk.
Sure. I'll get the, I'll get the details, and I'll bring it back to the board for, you know, the future, or have direct Ms. Morant to do so.
Yes, Board Member Thrower.
Just wanted to, because I think this through, our, whoever our permanent superintendent ends up being, I'm trying to reflect back on when we hired Dr. Gullett, and I don't remember a tiered amount of money. Like if you, if you're coming in with a doctorate to be our superintendent, you get this much. If you have your master's, you get this much. If you, you know, don't have that advanced degree, you get this much. So just, I think that's something, you know, earlier, we had a speaker asking, you know, what our job description is, well as fiscal oversight and policy. So I think that the implications of decisions we make today could very well affect decisions of, of tomorrow.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. James?
And I would echo that sentiment. So my concern would be that we're setting a standard that we, we will have to maintain. And so Dr. Gullett received a superintendent salary, and the job description is not clear as to whether a doctor is required or not, right? It, it doesn't say a doctorate is, is a necessary. And so we also did not then say, if you have it, we will pay you a supplement for having the degree. And so I do believe if we do this, we're going to be setting a standard that we will then pay. Obviously, all things can be negotiated, but we're going to be setting a unspoken standard that we will pay a superintendent a, an extra amount of money for their degree, when the likelihood is that most every candidate, if we do a national search, will have a doctorate degree who applies. So also, at the pay grade 97, the only other individuals who sit at that are our legal, and they all have doctorates. But because their doctorate is a requirement for their job, they don't get it because they have to have a J.D. to have the job. So this board member would say that at a minimum, this is a tabled conversation for another time. But I would be more of an advocate to just say that we are approving the contract, and we are not going to set any further standard for additional pay. This is the pay that we're committing to, and we'll move forward.
Madam Chair.
Reverend Cummings?
Let me say this. No, there was not a stipend, per se, added to Dr. Gullett's contract. However, I was in the negotiations, that consideration was taken in the fact that she did have a doctoral degree. So when we look at that, again, we, we're going to have to come back and look at all this again. So I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I'm just stating that you're going to pay for what you get. You're going to pay for what you get, so.
And I think we'll just, when it comes time for a superintendent, we will negotiate that. And it will just become a part of the cost. But the add-ons can become a lot, when you're adding on this and adding on that. And so I just think that, I think we approved a contract. There's a price in the contract that we've all agreed to. That would be my recommendation personally.
I just wanted to let the board know why I did not include it in the contract, because I hadn't received specific authorization to do so. And so from there, then the board will, thank you for your direction.
Any other comments, concerns from the board, from Attorney Powers?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Powers. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. And unfortunately, I see the community member who spoke about this has already left this evening. But I know Dr. Gullett has been doing a book study with many of her executive team and principals, and the board was also gifted with the book this evening. I've actually already been reading the book, and I'm almost finished with it as well. So I wanted to speak to this specifically, and actually, I'm going to reference this book a couple of times. The book is called The Wisdom of the Bullfrog by William McRaven. And Ms. Dela Cruz, this evening, has come to us now twice to talk specifically about the dissolution potentially of the federal DOE, and what that impact could be financially, specifically on special education services. So, Board, I'm just going to say that chapter 11 of this book is called Hope Is Not a Strategy. And so I understand that we can have a lot of good ideas and are very hopeful that our students with special needs will not be left in the cold as federal changes occur in Washington, D.C. But I do think we need to have reality conversations and not use hope as a strategy, and just consider what the ramifications of that might actually be as we move into our budget conversations. Also, since this is a full school board meeting, I have a couple of items I wanted to address specifically about our most recent school board meeting, which was just a week ago, which is unusual, because we don't normally have school board meetings a week apart. But based on something that occurred in that particular meeting, I, Board, if we have consensus, I recommend for future meetings where expulsions are pulled by a board member, that the principal who recommended the expulsion also be present for the off-air portion of the meeting. I think that's imperative. I think we can understand why we need to have that occur. And I have spoken with that principal who was told not to be there, or that it wasn't necessary, I should say. Not, not to be there, but it wasn't necessary. So Board, if we have consensus, I think if there are items off-air for expulsions, and we have a principal that has made that recommendation, we need to hear from them directly. And I know that that would have occurred last week. Another item I wanted to address is where I had told folks that I was, I was going to bring this up. I, I know that a national search is something that, at least we've, we are hearing from folks that they are interested in. But I also understand that the national search potentially is going to cost us a lot of money. We've heard 50, 60, 70,000 dollars potentially from a community member who just stated that in their comments publicly this evening. So I'm curious, Board, if we would be interested in entertaining the idea of conducting our own community survey? That is a part of what a national search firm would do. I pulled the old community survey that Ray and Associates did, and pulled those results previously. And also know that there have been surveys recently conducted in St. John's County and Monroe Counties, that they're currently selecting their superintendent. And so apart from actually spending money on that part of a national search, I wanted to see if the board would be interested in us bringing, in us actually creating that survey. The board bringing in our questions that we would like to see asked of the community, and leave it open for a month, and then see what happens. But that at least would get that information out there. So while we are certainly hearing, and I believe so, wholeheartedly that a national search is important, if the majority of our community does not believe that's important, then we could know that in advance and actually use that to guide our, our decision-making. So we do have a work session coming up on May 8th. I know that, I believe that, we still have a topic that we were just going to leave on every work session that was going to be superintendent search. So I don't know if we want to submit questions, our sample questions by May 1st, so it can be published, or if we want to come with ideas, if we all agree that we potentially could work on a community survey ourselves. So I'll leave that for pondering, and then you can address it potentially in your board comments. But the last thing that I wanted to express this evening, as Chair, as you and I've discussed, there are advantages and disadvantages to the order that we speak, board members, and who gets to comment first. And traditionally, during board comment time, the first board member who speaks is, is right here. So, and again, here we are. So there are advantages and disadvantages to this order. But on Tuesday evening, there were comments made that followed mine, that seemed to express concerns related to site-based budgeting. And that's something that we've been discussing for four years now. And so what was most concerning to me was that the statements made essentially projected fear toward the process for our employees. Fear of the unknown, fear of something that's hard. And we, we essentially projected that And we, we essentially projected that Marion County can't do hard things. That's, if you listen back to the way that was portrayed in that board meeting, it was projected, at least in an opinion here, that we essentially projected that Marion County can't do hard things. So quoting again from the book I referenced previously by Mr. McRaven, or I guess he's definitely got a title beyond that because he was a military Navy SEAL. But he, he quotes to say, "Every great leader must exhibit a sense of boldness because the rank and file don't want to follow a timid soul." So I regret that I didn't speak up that evening because after the comments were made after that, I, I felt that there was something else that needed to be said because we do have schools that are modeling this and we do have principals that are adopting it and love the idea and know the benefits. And while I understand there are still questions and concerns about what the, what the trickle down can be, or I guess trickle up from high school down in feeder patterns and, and what our ESE students are able to receive from a funding standpoint versus other classifications, I regretted that I didn't speak up at that time. So I just want to say that Marion County can do hard things. High-performing districts are already doing them. High-performing districts are already using site-based budgeting. And if high-performing districts can use that, so can we. And I'll finish with another quote from the same book. Be decisive. Don't take too much counsel of your fears. Be thoughtful, but not paralyzed by indecision. And that'll conclude my board comments.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All right. We're going to stop right, yes?
Decisions, don't we have a motion in a second? Are we getting ready to vote here at some point?
We, no, we only voted on the two items.
On the agenda item?
No, we already voted on both agenda items.
We voted on both. We're on board comments.
I do think it was confusing though because the way it was brought up by Attorney Powers, it kind of felt like it was a voteable item, but I think he was just seeking us to give consensus as to whether we wanted to add it or not.
Right. I was just including that during my comments, that, that was something that came up that I did not include within the contract discussion and it was something that if the board had consensus, that they wanted to direct Ms. Marant, that the board could do so, or if it was subject to a future conversation, the board could have that future conversation. But I simply wanted to let the board know that I hadn't included it in the contract.
Thank you. Because we, we talked about a lot of things and what we were going to wait for an upcoming meeting versus what we were voting on and then going off into a completely different topic. So I felt like if it was getting more difficult for me to follow, that it might be good to bring it all back around at this point.
Thank you Board Member Thrower for refreshing us. So with that, we'll continue board comments. Dr. James?
Sure. Thank you. I am grateful tonight that we made a decision on an interim superintendent and I'm grateful we made that decision for the next calendar year. I'm looking forward to the work of Dr. Gullett and Dr. Brewer together over the next two and a half months at this point as they transition through and make some difficult decisions for this district. And I'm looking forward to what we will see happen in the coming months. Once Dr. Gullett departs us and Dr. Brewer sprouts her wings, I'm excited to see where that will take us. And I feel confident that this board is going to continue to make difficult decisions. And so I fully support a survey, Dr. Campbell. I would actually, maybe, I don't know the survey that you're, I haven't seen it recently at least, but I would make the recommendation that we attach that old survey maybe to the agenda and then the board can use that as a baseline and add or delete maybe as we see fit. But I would fully support doing a informal, formal but informal, survey throughout our community. I would love to launch it ideally before the end of school because we always know we kind of lose some juice over the summer with our communities as schools are out and we're not able to see our kids every day. So if that is even feasible, I would love to see that occur before the end of school so that we can get that out and leave it open for maybe until, you know, the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. And then this board in July can review the results and have productive conversation about what the community wants. Knowing if we do a national search, a survey like that will either probably have to be duplicated or potentially we could use the one we already did, but I, we're going to go that direction more than likely regardless. So I would love to see what the community's thoughts are. Those would be my two cents. Let's just take the one we used before and then as a board, add and delete. So those are my two cents on that, but on an upcoming board agenda, if there's space to add it, I'm on board with that for sure. Regarding the off-airs, I, I think principals are always welcome, that we've seen principals in the audience in the last few, few meetings off-air, my, for contesting. I would say, I'm not sure we can make a principal come to a meeting, but certainly extending an opportunity.
It's not discouraging. That, that's my point.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I think a principal's welcome, I would hope, to an off-air discipline conversation. Yeah, absolutely. I will reiterate, I think the important thing here is, and something that we have continued to work on, the packet that's brought to the board for expulsion, which the public does not see, but the packets need to be better. So if we are going to expel a student, the packet needs to have all the meat and potatoes in it because that is what the board is making a decision on, the packet. The board is not making a decision on any of the other comments, remarks, we're looking at the packet. And so that's, that is the piece to the puzzle that I need to ensure is continued to be strengthened. And I am grateful we're going to move forward as a board, am ready to see this district continue to grow and flourish and work towards our achieved 2026 goals. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Thank you, ma'am Chair. While we're talking about the off-air comments, again, I want to thank the community once again for coming out tonight and expressing your concerns and interest in this process that we're, we're entering to and just sharing your concerns. The community's voice is valuable and should be heard. While we're talking about the discipline process, since I've been on this board, and I think Ms. Dora would echo this, my, one of my biggest, biggest pains has been that our discipline process be consistent and that due process is done completely and is done the right way. So I don't have an issue with principals coming, but I just want to make sure that we follow the process that those packets, that's what we look at. We use everything that's in the packet to make a determination. Witness statements, staff statements, everything. And we have to, matter of fact, I would, I would even like to see something added to the packet, which would be if there is a video, a summation of the video in the packet because that helps us to make a, a good decision, other than just some other arbitrary things. So I, I don't have an issue with the, the principals coming, but they can't come and then try to add extra weight or say things that they did not put into that packet. That would not be fair. That would not be fair at all. If they've already stayed at one time in the packet, coming here to the meeting and, and then say something additional doesn't, is not going to jive with me, right? So with that being said, I, I heard Dr. Campbell's statements about the survey. We did do surveys last time, but we didn't do the survey, the actual firm, Ray and Associates did the survey. I think looking at those surveys could tell us a lot, but a lot has happened since those surveys were done. COVID happened. This district went through some changes since that time. So if we, I just don't want us to take face value using that as a, as the only model for survey in the community because the community has changed since that time. So we can use it as a, as a, something to look at, but I still think that we have to, the way Ray and Associates did the survey, they were able to reach, and, and some of the people are here tonight, they were able to reach the greater community. We have a problem within our district of sometimes how we send out surveys that we don't touch the whole community. We hit parts of the community. The, the thing that I'm going to look for is that how did this survey get distributed? If, if we're going to do a survey that we touch every stakeholders, every group, because Ray and Associates, that was their job. That's what we paid them to do, to make sure that they didn't hit select groups of people, but they hit everybody that was interested in being a part of it. So I'm fine with surveys, as long as we touching everybody and that we're not just hitting certain groups of people because everybody matters, all kids, all kids in this district matter. So I'm fine with that. I also heard Dr. Campbell's statement about the site-based budgeting and that it may, that some of the comments that may have been made may have sounded like we were imparting fear. I, I don't agree with that comment that that's, she has the right to feel that way, or maybe that's how she heard it. My, my comments concerning site-based budgeting is that sometimes we, or the powers that be, make decisions and have not gotten the input, just like we just got through talking, the input from those who are doing the work. And we've told them, we've mandated that this is going to happen and folk haven't talked to the people in the trenches to see how that affects them. I, after that meeting, I got a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails and a lot of texts saying, "Thank you for finally saying something that we couldn't say because we didn't want to kick against something that we hadn't had any opportunity to put input into." So all I'm going to say about this is that whenever we, there, there are high-performance districts that are using site-based budgeting, but there are also high-performing districts that aren't using site-based budgeting. So we can't just use it as an in-all and say that, that we won't be a high-performing district if we don't, if we use site-based budgeting. You can still use site-based budget and still be a low-performing district because there are low-performing districts that use site-based budgeting. All I'm going to say is that we need to get the input from those people who are doing the work and make sure that those people are well-versed in doing the work because I don't think there's, there's anything that they can't do and I don't think they're fearful of doing it. But is it going to work for Marion County? Just because it works in another county doesn't mean that it's, it's proper for Marion County. Just because other counties have seen success with it doesn't mean that it's going to be successful in Marion County. We need everything on the table that's going to help Marion County be successful, that's going to help the students in Marion County be successful. And if it's site-based budgeting, fine. If it's not site-budgeting, fine. But whatever it is that's going to help us be successful, that's what we need to do and we don't need to ram anything down anybody's throat without getting the proper input from all the stakeholders. Staff are stakeholders as well and sometimes we overlook the staff. Those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you Reverend Cummings. Board Member Thrower?
Thank you. And again, appreciation for everyone that came out and spoke tonight or not. You're all seen, heard, and, and recognized. Speaking of the, the survey, I think one of the strengths of having a third, an independent third party do it is that it was more trusted by employees. And again, when I said, alluded earlier that there's wounds that need to continue to heal, that people, folks worry about retaliation. They worry about, well, can this be tracked? Can they really, is it really anonymous? So I just think it's important to keep putting that, that out there. One thing I'm a hundred percent in agreement on is that we definitely need to do probably more than, than one survey. We really want to reach as many people as we can, especially since you don't get to vote. So I want to hear and I'm sure other board members want to continue to hear from our constituents about their, anything that, that you want to know or, or you're concerned about or complimentary of in, in public education. You know, we, we all pay taxes, including all of us sitting up here. Every decision that we make affects us as well. So again, it is, it is a partnership. It is a privilege to have the opportunity to sit up here. And just for the record, it is admirable, admirable, I want to say admirable, Admiral William McRaven, U.S. Navy retired. This is the book we've been talking about, The Wisdom of the Bullfrog, Leadership Made Simple But Not So Easy. So we've got some pretty good role models we're trying to live up to. And I'll finish by saying, welcome, Dr. Brewer. Thank you for taking on this huge lift. Please know that you have a lot of people behind you. The board voted unanimously to support you in this contract for the next year and I very much look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you Board Member Thrower. I just have a few brief comments I want to share. Dr. Campbell, I too would be in support of a survey that is actually on my list as we moved into a permanent superintendent position, so I would be in favor of that. And as much as I hate to say this, I, we're talking about disciplinary packets, expulsion packets. I think there's some work that needs to be done in that area too. And I, I really hate to ask that because the expulsion packet is large already. So our administrators already have a, a heavy lift when they bring an expulsion forward. But I do think there's room for improvement in that when, when a situation comes back or after the fact and then there's more information that as a board member I was not aware of, it wasn't part of the packet, we didn't ask it. You know, I don't, I don't know exactly what, where the breakdown is, but that's definitely important that we are making the best decision for that student. So anyway, I, I look forward to further conversation. This board continues to have a lot of conversation about expulsion referrals. It is one of the many things I lose sleep over at night, making sure that, did I vote for the right decision for what's best for that student? So I welcome more conversation if principals are listening and you have recommendations on how we can improve that, please reach out to me. You know, I'm open for, and looking forward to, to making that process better and more efficient. I want to say, I wasn't, I'm not fearful at all of site-based budgeting. What I am is concerned. It is another heavy lift that we're asking our staff, our school secretaries and our principals. And we've had a lot of turnover in the position of our secretaries. It already is a very cumbersome position. And so Marion County in the past, and, and I come from the position, those of you that don't know, was a teacher in the district for a very long time. Marion County has a history of rolling out new things without sufficient training. And so, oh, I see some heads nodding in the audience. Thank you. I want to make sure that we are not pushing this on our staff without the appropriate training, practice, whatever that looks like. I have not used, I have not done that. But I hear that it is, it is difficult and it's time-consuming, at least as you learn the process. So I'm not fearful at all. Marion County does hard things every single day, but I do, I feel a level of, of protecting our staff to make sure they have the tools that they need before they begin this process. I do think there's a lot of value in site-based budgeting, so I'm looking forward to what that looks like. I just want to make sure that we don't hurry through that transition. Let me see. I did want to say, ending on something positive, visited Hillcrest School today, their annual art show. If you need an uplifting experience, I think I say this every year, it is absolutely magical, vibrant, positive, renewing, all of the things to see what the students create for the Hillcrest Art Show. So if you haven't been, it, it closed out today, but I encourage you to put it on your calendar for next year. It is a great, great experience. And lastly, I want to welcome Dr. Brewer. Just so excited to have you as our interim superintendent. And as I've visited schools this last week, the staff is very excited to have you on board. So we look forward, I look forward, to what you bring to Marion County schools as the interim superintendent. So thank you. If there's not, if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you Reverend Cummings, seconded by Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.